Mitch O'Farrell, the fine councilman of the 15th district. Thank you, Mitch O'Farrell. Joe Buscagno, is that correct there, Joe? All the way from San Pedro. But more important, the super councilman out of the district. Your daddy's here. Give Mr. Buscagno Senior a big hand. And your wife Jay, more important there, good job. Take your w- Good morning again, this is Los Angeles City Council. Welcome to John Ferraro Chambers. This is the 18th day of October 2013. It's going to be a great weekend. We wish Notre Dame and SC for a great football game. We want the Trojans to win. And also, we want the... Wait a second, we're going to get there. And we also want the great UCLA Bruins to beat Stanford. Hanley up there at Palo Alto. But really, we want, we want to meet me in St. Louis tonight and see the Dodgers whack the Cardinals. This is a great day. This is a great day. I want to welcome the American Society of Civil Engineers, who are here today. Please stand up in the back. Please stand up. Thank you so much. The American Society of Civil Engineers are here lobbying, taking to the work. Without engineers, we couldn't do it. And we have, without a full quorum, we couldn't do it. So let's, we have a full quorum. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Buscano, Sidio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corret, Kokorian, Labaj, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, West, eleven members, President Accor. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves, Mr. Fuente seconds.
Committal resolutions for approval.
Mr. Kokorian moves, and Mr. Corret seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to run through the agenda?
I think I want to just check right here for a second. Mr. O'Farrell, you ready to go? Mr. Mitch O'Farrell, you ready to go? Let's please welcome to the podium for a very special presentation, the great councilman of the 13th district, council member Mitch O'Farrell. Thank you, Mitch. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Colleagues, October is Anti-Bullying Month. Is everyone aware of this?
Yes, sir.
We have several advocates for anti-bullying standing with me today. And in just a bit, I'm going to have Monica Harmon, founder of Speak Out Against Bullying. I'm going to have Deputy Chief Jorge Villiegas, LAPD Operations Valley Bureau, and Deputy Chief Jose Perez, LAPD Operations Central Bureau, speak. I also want to acknowledge Tyler Eisen, President of the LAPPL, the Los Angeles Police Protective League, representatives from GLAD, Lisette Dorate Special Needs Network, Dennis Cato, LAPD Commander, Operation West Bureau, and Captain Martin Baeza, LAPD Hallenbeck Area.
And Sergeant Daryl Davis from Hollywood area. Don't forget him.
Sergeant Davis, welcome. My buddy, thank you, Sergeant Davis. This morning, I'm joined by law enforcement personnel and all of those organizations I mentioned. The month of October 2013 marks the 8th Annual National Bullying Prevention Month. Days throughout the month of October have been designated as ways to show support and bring awareness of bullying. October 9th, as Unite Against Bullying Day. And October 17th, yesterday, when millions of Americans wear purple for Spirit Day as a sign of support for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT youth, and to speak out against bullying. My first speaker, Monica Harmon, began in 2011 a campaign against bullying by creating Speak Out Against Bullying. My colleagues, Monica Harmon.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you so much for this honor. You know, I'm standing here before you, but really, this is a day that we need to bring awareness and inspire action for all the victims of bullying and for the kids who bully, who we need to help modify their behavior. I've been in front of thousands and thousands of children throughout Los Angeles, and I'm thankful that my partners with LAPD have been there with me at school assemblies, parent group meetings, town hall meetings, and more. And so, I just can't thank you enough for this acknowledgement because bullying begins with us. Each and every one of us needs to do our part because just this week, another 12-year-old had committed suicide, and there was an arrest. We need to show kids that there's a better way. They need to be more respectful and compassionate of each other. Too many children all across Los Angeles that I have spoken to are afraid to go to school because of bullying. And we need to do our part. We cannot ignore it anymore. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Harmon. My colleagues here, some very startling statistics. Over 3.2 million students are victims of bullying each year. One in four teachers see nothing wrong with bullying and will only intervene 4% of the time. Approximately 160,000 teens skip school every day because of bullying. One in seven students in grades K through 12 is either a bully or a victim of bullying. 56% of students have personally witnessed some type of bullying at school. Over 2/3 of students believe that schools respond poorly to bullying, with a high percentage of students believing that adult help is infrequent and ineffective. 71% of students report incidents of bullying as a problem at their school. 90% of 4th through 8th graders report being victims of bullying. And if you are in the LGBT community, it's even worse. 20% of homeless youth are LGBT. In comparison, the general youth population is only 10% LGBT. Homelessness of our LGBT youth is often the cause of bullying. LGBT youth once homeless are at higher risk for victimization, mental health problems, unsafe sexual practices. 58.7% of LGBT homeless youth have been victimized compared to 33% of all other youth. LGBT youth are roughly 7.4 times more likely to experience acts of violence than other youth. And the suicide rate is 62% higher than all other youth. We have a lot of work to do, and the people standing with me today are doing that incredible work. Speak Out Against Bullying empowers students and informs parents of how to effectively deal with bullying, cyberbullying, the use of responsible social media, respect, and tolerance. Let's see, in May, if, I'm sorry, if I may direct your attention to the TV screens for a short video report on the event. And I understand we have the video queued up now.
Well, October is National Anti-Bullying Month. The LAPD taping up with a special program to teach kids that bullying is wrong. K-CAN News Dave Lopez shows us students who share their stories of being victimized and others who are explaining what they've learned.
Have you been bullied?
Yes.
Isabel is 10 years old, a 4th grader. She said she was bullied two years ago at a different school by older girls because of the color of her skin.
I didn't fit in very well because I was half-black, so they would tease me on my hair. And I was very scared to even wear a ponytail.
What happens when a kid is mean to another kid?
It's a question that many students, quite frankly, don't know how to answer. That's why such a push. That's the reason that October is Anti-Bullying Month. Awareness, so that young children like Isabel won't be victims.
They never really physically hurt me, but it just felt like they were hurting my feelings a lot.
That's just one story, experts tell us. One of thousands that happen almost every day somewhere in a school in the United States. Someone getting bullied. And the experts say the best way to combat it is to teach a child at a very early age, you can do something about it.
The right thing to do is to stand up and say, hey, why are you picking on him?
They listen to a lecture, politicians and police officers telling them, bullying is wrong.
If you don't tell anybody, he'll think he can keep on making it worse, and he will.
The message of don't put up with it seemed to sink in.
Bullying is wrong, and never to do it, and there are consequences to your actions.
I never knew how many kids are bullied. They talked about that six out of 10 kids are afraid to go to school because of bullies.
The subject grabbed their attention. And what else did they learn?
Be peaceful and just ignore him and walk away.
Yeah, but what if he goes after you?
Then you walk a little faster.
From Hollywood, Dave Lopez, K-CAN News.
And colleagues, before I bring up Chief Jorge Villiegas and Chief Perez, I'm going to ask our LAPPL President, Mr. Tyler Eisen, to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. Thanks, Council, for recognizing Monica Harmon today. It's been a great honor for us to participate with Monica. I'm glad she approached us. And I'm really glad that she's getting some recognition because Monica Harmon isn't just about bullying. She's about the city of Los Angeles and making the city of Los Angeles better. There have been times in the not-too-distant past, and I wouldn't refer to it as bullying, but Monica has been very expressive to me about how she hasn't agreed with some of the things that I've done. But the one thing that you can always count on from Monica, and it's demonstrated here, is that she is all about the city of Los Angeles and what's right. It doesn't matter what you've done in the past. It doesn't matter what you'll do in the future. So if she's been mad at you in the past, I'm evidence here, standing here today, that you can get back on her good side if you do the right thing. And we would all be better off if we all had a little bit more Monica Harmon in us. So, thank you, Monica.
Thank you. I don't know what I would have done if I didn't have two strong Irish Native American sisters to protect me through school, like Monica. Okay, I would like to invite Deputy Chief Jorge Villiegas, LAPD Operations Valley Bureau, and Deputy Chief Jose Perez, LAPD Operations Central Bureau, to step up.
Good morning. I wanted to come before this council to say thank you and my appreciation for the acknowledgement of Monica Harmon. Monica Harmon has been working in the community very diligently for a long period of time. And when she came up with this campaign to address bullying, to address the issue of respect in young people, it resonated with me, as it did with many of our area captains, senior lead officers, and our community relations officers. It's a very popular program that's out there in the community. It's very popular with the schools. In fact, there's so much of a need, there's so many requests, that we can't fill them all. So I'm very thankful to Monica Harmon for all of her efforts. The issue of respect in bullying is something that we need to continue to campaign. Thank you.
Morning. I've known Monica almost half of my law enforcement career. We started working together at Hallenbeck when I had the gang unit at that time. And she was helping us, not only with our officers, but also with the community and some of the outreach that we were doing. The one thing that I arrived at Central Bureau, and she invited me to her first one in my tenure there. I went to it, and I was amazed at the reception that she received and how well the kids really absorbed all this. The other thing that was quickly evident to me that in all the projects I've worked with her, this is the one that she's been the most passionate for. And I can honestly say that she's as passionate and committed to this as she is lovely, and it's great to have her working with us as a partner with the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you, Monica.
Wonderful. Clearly, we all need Monica Harmon on our side. I'd like to present, speak out against bullying with this resolution, declaring the month of October as National Bullying Prevention Month in the city of Los Angeles. In closing, because of the fine work that you are doing, Ms. Harmon, and the people standing with me and many people in this chamber, the end of bullying begins with you. Congratulations.
And as Betsy takes those pictures there, Mr. O'Farrell, some of our colleagues have great statements. Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join the peace choir and stand against bullying. What I have seen in my days with the police department and looking, reviewing crime reports that stemmed from bullying, we need to do everything in our part based on what I saw as a police officer for nearly 15 years. And who was on the forefront? Monica Harmon. You've seen Monica be vocal, be a champion for our kids when it came to crime prevention, gang prevention intervention at community police advisory board meetings, CPAB meetings. Monica, I want to say, even the time when I formed the teen CPAB, you were there with me. You stood with me, and we offered a voice for the teenager, the teen population, where we agreed that when teenagers speak, people listen. And who better to problem-solve on the issue of bullying than our teenagers? They have a powerful voice. So Monica, we congratulate you. We thank our community members who are here, our police department, Eleanor Montano, a pillar in the Wilmington community for focusing on this issue. And just last week, my wife Jay is here. She's been a teacher for 15 years with LUN5 and has addressed this issue in her classrooms. Just last week, our son came home with a sheet of paper on focusing on bullying prevention. And we sat down at the dinner table with him to talk about cyberbullying because he's never heard of it. So what you are doing is working. We thank you, we love you. And if we have any opportunity to save someone's life and raise this awareness in our city and beyond, throughout our country, you guys are doing a great job. God bless you, and thank you for your efforts.
Very good. Mr. Englander.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Monica. Thank you so much. Actually, before I took office, I was out there on the circuit going to a lot of different groups to teach about cyberbullying. Not just bullying, but specifically cyberbullying. And working with a lot of parent groups and youth groups to teach them about what's out there. Not just on Instagram and Facebook, but this new thing also called Group Text, Group Chat, which a lot of people are not familiar with. And it's shocking that every teenager now is in a group chat. And how that works is when you invite people, only those people can view it. And usually, those are set up to talk about other people. And every student, without fail, any student that has or youth that has a smartphone now is in a group chat. And it's driving kids to not only miss school, but it's leading to all kinds of other issues of depression. Kids today, because of bullying, are starting to cut themselves more than ever. And we see that in society of every... And it doesn't matter where you're from or what your background is. It affects all kids. This is a big issue, and I can't thank you enough for all your work on this front. Some tips to parents, we've got to put out there more. One is, and I've told many, many parents and grandparents, that you have to have all the passwords and be able to log in, not be a friend with them on Instagram or Facebook or whatever social media they're using, but actually have their password and login as them so you can actually see the things they've hidden from you. That's critical. It's one of the things that in my household, we do with my kids, my children. And if you want to have access and you want to have internet access, you want to have a smartphone, then I've required that I have all passwords to everything. So there's things we have to do to make sure that we talk and communicate with our children. This is a big issue. It's not going away. It's growing exponentially every day. And we can never bring enough attention to this. This is a very, very serious issue. So thank you so much for everything you've done and everyone that has joined you. Mitch O'Farrell, thank you very much for bringing this forward as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be brief. Mr. O'Farrell, thank you so much for bringing this measure before this body. While I served in the legislature, my colleagues and I saw a lot of anti-bullying legislation, and it's a very important message that we're carrying today. So thank you for bringing forward this resolution. I had to get up and say thank you to Monica Harmon as well. Tyler, you're absolutely right. She is tough, but she doesn't bully. She's an advocate, and I think she, like many of us, understand that we have to lead by example. Our children, our youth, our future is highly dependent on how we purport to believe in value and systems like that. And to be able to have you at the forefront of all of these issues has been a real pleasure. I've known you as a staffer to a council office, as a deputy mayor for the city of Los Angeles. And so now, it's my real honor to be able to recognize you for all that you do for this department and for our children. Thank you so much, Monica Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Fuente's members. Mr. O'Farrell, always thank you for your leadership, that team of people around you. Monica, I remember when you filled out public comment cards. And then you went outside and you made things happen. That's the action that takes it. So important. And the tragedy this week of the young girl in Florida and the internet and the response that they made, it's heartbreaking. So we have work to do, and it can be done. And I want to thank everyone, including Sergeant Davis, on up to the commanders and chiefs, all the work. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day. And we have another very special presentation for a very special recognition. Please welcome the great councilman of the 15th district, the one and only Joe Buscagno.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's great to be here to celebrate the Italian-American Heritage Month here in the John Ferraro City Council chambers.
Let's hear it for the late, great John Ferraro, the highest-ranked Italian American.
It is also fitting that we recognize the year the Italian culture that has been deemed by our President of the United States, Barack Obama. Let's hear for our great President, who has dedicated 2013 to the Year of the Italian Culture.
Very good there, Mr. Obama.
As you know, colleagues, I'm a proud first-generation Italian-American. And it's an honor to be standing here honoring the great contributions of fellow Italian-Americans as an elected official today. Just last night, world-renowned Italian musician and singer-songwriter Eros Ramazzotti performed at the Greek Theater. And what a show it was. It was an incredible show, and we were able, before his performance, to honor him for his contributions in the entertainment world by giving him the Italian Spirit Award for his numerous accomplishments throughout his career. And our Council General Giuseppe Pedone joined me in that honor. As many of you know, Italian-Americans have a rich history in the founding and growth of this nation. In 1524, Giovanni del Verzzano, a mariner from Florence, Italy, set foot in what is now Rhode Island. His arrival at Block Island and his observation and that it was about the size of an island of roads later gave Rhode Island its name. Italian-Americans have made great contributions to American society economically, artistically, culturally, scientifically, and politically. Italians and Italian-Americans invented pianos, violins, calendars, radios, telescopes, compasses, microscopes, thermometers, eyeglasses, steam engines, typewriters, and batteries. And they can make some good food as well. Italian-Americans have toiled and labored while helping to build our nation's infrastructure, including railroads, tunnels, highways, and subways. The Italian presence here in Los Angeles began in 1827 with Giovanni Leandri, a native of Sardinia, who established a business and built a home in the Pueblo, adjacent to where Union Station currently stands at the heart of the Italian enclave located today, as we know it, El Pueblo Historical Monument, Chinatown, and Lincoln Heights. Italians have made great contributions to the development of Los Angeles and California from the fields of banking, science, agriculture, transportation, and entertainment, and are responsible for great landmarks such as Watts Towers, Duarte Villa, Venice Canals, and the Biltmore Hotel. In my hometown of San Pedro, is home to an estimated 45,000 Italian-Americans. In my hometown of San Pedro, is home to an estimated 45,000 Italian-Americans making it the largest Italian-American community in Southern California, maybe even the state, Mr. Council General. And many social clubs are here before you along with their members, the Trapito Club, the Ischia Sister City Foundation, the Italian-American Club of San Pedro, the Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles with Mariana Gatto who provided these beautiful baskets before you, and Federated Ítalo American with Antenza's group that serves over 85 Italian groups. The families in San Pedro immigrated to San Pedro for the fishing and canning industry for a better life for themselves and their families, the American dream. And it's what brought my family here and why I stand before you as a council member. I want to thank you all for coming to all of our groups. I want to thank Mariana Gatto and the Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles, who just had an incredible fundraiser Taste of Italy, just a few blocks here. We're making every effort to make that museum happen through raising dollars. I also want to thank Sandra Ciaramataro, part of my team member, for coordinating this. And of course, the Honorable Council General Giuseppe Peroni for joining us here today. Let's give Giuseppe a round of applause. And before I call up our Council General, I'm going to say a few words in Italian, Mr. President. Oggi abbiamo celebrato l'anno della cultura italiana, non solo negli Stati Uniti ma nella città di Los Angeles. Ci rinniamo in una delle città più diverse che parlano di più di 200 lingue. Noi siamo qui per celebrare anche i contributi italiani hanno fatto per la nostra città. Arte, moda, cibo, politica, e cinema. Siamo grati a tutti che sono venuti prima di noi, like John Ferraro and Joe Sorrell. È anche importante per preservare la nostra cultura per le generazioni future. Grazie. And with that, he doesn't know this, but our Council General Giuseppe Peroni, we are going to recognize him and award him with our Italian Leadership Award. Giuseppe Peroni, his service not only to Italy but to the city of Los Angeles speaks volume about his character, his leadership, and commitment to the Italian nationals both here and abroad. Council General Peroni assumed this position September 1st, 2011, and has served well above and beyond his best ability to this day. In fact, he took social media to a next level when it comes to consulate offices here in Los Angeles. And for that, Mr. Council General, thank you for being vocal, for being visible, connecting with our communities across Los Angeles and the many states that he serves. And I want to present to you the Italian Leadership Award for your leadership and dedication to all Italian-Americans and of course, my mom Rosa Buscaino's homemade Italian pasta sauce.
Oh, very good, Joseph.
And Mr. Council General. And with that, help me welcome this year's recipient of the Italian Leadership Award, the Council President, Council General Giuseppe Peroni.
Thank you, Joe. This is great and especially thank you for your mommy pasta sauce. Thank you very much.
Let's give his mommy a big, big hand right now. I know she's watching this on TV.
And it was great to hear the beautiful language that Joe articulated extremely well. And it's nice to hear Italian spoken here at the City Council of LA. Thank you, council members, for proclaiming October Italian Heritage Month. It means a lot to us. October is a very special month for all of us and the Italian-American associations throughout Southern California and in Los Angeles in particular have organized so many important and stunning events. Taste of Italy, San Gennaro, and all of, and many other are being planned for October. But most importantly, your support, the institutional support of the city of Los Angeles means a lot to us because it's a sign for, it's a sign that strengthens the commitment of all Italian and all Italian-American associations to promoting and upholding their culture, their heritage, their identity. Italians, as Joe has said extremely well, have given an impressive contribution to the city of LA, a contribution that is visible in the architectural landscape. And we've been so extremely proud to be at Joe's swearing-in ceremony at the Watts Towers, which is an impressive monument created by an Italian immigrant. But also throughout the city, but it's not just the architecture, it's everywhere. You can see it in the food industry, you can see it in the entertainment and arts industry, you can see it just by walking on Hollywood Boulevard and the Walk of Fame. So many Italians have achieved notoriety and so many Italians are beloved here for their contribution in entertainment. We are also particularly proud because we have an incredible advocate in the city of, in the City Council of LA, in the person of Joe Buscaino, who's a true Italian from Bagheria. And we cannot thank him enough for his support, for his being an advocate of everything Italian. Please give Joe a round of applause because he really deserves it more than anyone. I should also mention that the new mayor of the city of Los Angeles makes us also extremely proud because of his last name Garcetti, which testify of Italian ancestry, of which he is also extremely proud. And we really look forward to cooperating, to working with the mayor, with the city council, with the organizations, and with everybody who loves this beautiful country. The Italian institutions have been in LA since 1901, when the Italian government opened its first consular agency. And from then, we have developed our presence. And we do have today many offices. In addition to the Council General, we have an Italian Institute of Culture, which is very active and as Joe said, is presenting many, many events within the framework of the Year of Italian Culture in the US. We have an Italian Trade Commission and Italian Tourist Board. So we're all here to participate in this, in this great city's life and we want to make a difference. We know that the Italian government is profoundly committed to strengthen his relationship with the US. Our prime minister was here yesterday to meet with President Obama. And so with that, we have the perfect landscape to improve our presence here, to strengthen our ties, and to remember that Italians are a permanent feature and a great contributor to the landscape of this great city. Grazie a tutti.
Council General, very good. Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. And to Joe, to you and your family and your beautiful wife Jay, you guys are incredible people. And one of the things that I wanted to stand up and thank you for this presentation today is not to talk about all the great things that the Italians have brought to Los Angeles, but about what you have done with your families as well. And it reminds me, and I think we had this conversation when I was at your house, you invited us over to your uncle's house as you were making pizza. And I thought it was going to be five or six people because he said just the family's coming together. He's here now. And the family was like, see all the people standing? This was the immediate family that was over. And I said, wow, you guys do this like once a year? He said, no, we do this every week. What are you talking about? How tight the Italian families are. We are the long-lost, the Jews are the long-lost tribe of the Italian heritage. And it's a very good thing. It's incredible. And you just welcome everyone with open arms. We felt very much part of the family. And in fact, my kids have been asking ever since that day, when are we going back? When are we going to Uncle Sal's? And I don't know if you got the shirt. I brought you back a shirt on my travels. You've got the shirt I bought you, the Uncle Sal's Italian restaurant that we found in Mexico. And I had to buy it for you. It's incredible. And I will tell you, colleagues, when you see the operation, and it's an operation, you see this bottle of Italian sauce that, the Buscaino Mama Sauce that they make. This operation is phenomenal. It's all done in a garage over several months where they store it for a year at a time. And it's incredible that everybody participates in the family to make this and it's a beautiful thing. God bless you. Congratulations once again. And my house is open to you anytime as well.
Thanks, Mitch. I love you.
Mr. Buscaino, Council General. Brad Ameyer, get up here for a second. I want all the Italians to fill the aisles. To get a good picture up here.
Yeah, and also if I may, Mr. President, joining us.
Carmelo, get Carmelo. Introduce her from our sister city right away.
Yes. Coming from Detroit, visiting us Josie and Joe Vitale, Sal and Fran Balalamente, Mary and Vince De La Piccolo, and all the way from Rome, Mr. and Mrs. Alberto Licata. Let's give them a warm LA, city of LA welcome. And if we can get the proclamation.
And hold up your mama's pasta sauce. And also, there's something, Council General, you got to know, so eloquently as you spoke, Sharon Dickerson right here, and I want to pronounce her maiden name correctly.
Oh, boy.
Toddarello, right here is the charge of all the clerks. All the business of the city goes through Sharon, Italian-American. Give her a big hand right there. Sharon, good job, Sharon. And Council General, I speak from where John Ferraro sat, the predecessor to the 4th District, President of City Council, 18 years, 35 years of service. Brought the Olympics Games with Mayor Tom Bradley. The vote was eight to seven. The Olympic heritage is great between Rome, the original Coliseum, all of that. The Italians, like all people, are very special. And I just wanted to, on behalf of the late, great John Ferraro, where he sat.
Yes. Yes. I've been very blessed to have John Ferraro's desk in my office today and to leave that legacy, I'd be so blessed to do just that.
Right, and Joe Sorrell would be over there by the robes. But that's another story.
Yes, absolutely. He's shining down upon us. So we do have, we're proud of our sister city relationship with Ischia, and I'm pushing for a port-sister-city relationship, having the Port of Los Angeles in our backyard. We're working with the port to make that happen. Grazie a tutti. Have a great weekend in Forza Italia, no? Ciao.
Mitch. Oh, you want to do the proclamation? Would you do that? All right. Okay, while they're taking photos, if we could, just go ahead and run through some of the agenda items.
Before we begin, Mr. President, there was a request by member to continue item 11 until October 25th.
Okay, item 11 until October 25th. That'll be without objection.
Items one through eight are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, items one through eight, colleagues. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open now. We've got one. Yes, Mr. Coretz.
Eight special.
Eight special by Mr. Coretz. Okay, all the other items? We'll go ahead and open the roll. Item, sorry, item one called special as well by Mr. Blumenfield. Seeing no others, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Madam clerk?
Items nine through 15 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, 10 votes required for consideration. We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And do we have cards on any of those items?
Cards on items nine, 10, 13, 14, and 15.
Okay, so that leaves items 12, 16, and 17. Is it just 12?
Just 12, yes.
Item 12 then, Mr. Coretz.
16 and 17 special.
Okay, 16, we're not there yet, but we'll be there in one moment. Okay, so for item 12, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, item 16 and 17 are going to be special for Mr. Coretz. And with that, we'll go ahead and go to Mr. Labonge's presentation. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Englander and members. It's a very special day here because there's a very special group here, the Independent Shakespeare Company, which has a great story in Los Angeles, working with our cultural affairs department, Mr. Kocorian. They had great success at Barnstall, but it overgrew because everybody knows Bill Shakespeare is a pretty influential guy. So that being said, as they overgrew their relationship at Barnstall, I kind of came along and someone else came along. I said, have you ever been to the Old Zoo? Anybody ever been to the Old Zoo? We're all too old to be to leave the Old Zoo. I was at the Old Zoo, but the Old Zoo is a great place in the central part of the park near the historic merry-go-round. And that's where William Shakespeare's, the Independent Shakespeare Company, now for the fourth year, is your home right there. And believe it or not, Mr. Sedile, 45,000 people came this summer for free Shakespeare, right in this beautiful nestled part of Griffith Park. All of us are working together to get them a permanent stage, which is going through the processing. But I wanted to salute them because there's nothing like a free event in the community. The work that you do in MacArthur Park, your work you do in Hollywood, in Lemur Park, in Exposition Park, Hanson Dam, all these public places throughout our city, people come and have an expression and have faith in our city because they enjoy that activity. So I wanted to salute the William Shakespeare Independent Company. And right next, did I say that right? I know. Independent Shakespeare Company, not William Shakespeare. You got it there. But right next to me is the very artistic director. I want to say Melissa, I'm so good to see you. And I have right behind you, there's David, and you're going to introduce everybody. But you know, Mr. Shakespeare, which I had troubles, you know, pronouncing his name when I was at high school because I was Irish, you know, we had a little trouble with that. But that's another story. But I want you, Melissa, to tell us all about the special times that have there. And I'm going to call on Ms. Johnson, who's my deputy, to say a few words as she helped lay us on here. Go first and introduce our guest. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Well, this is an honor and all the world is a stage. And we'd like to, wasn't that nice? And we'd like to introduce Melissa. And Melissa, you'll be introducing the managing director, David, and the other board members, Board Chairman John. So your honors, please.
Good job.
Yes. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. Thank you, council member. Behind me is David Melville, managing director. We also have our board chairman, John Baumann, our development manager, Marisa Johnston, our administrative assistant, Sarah Kronk, and our board members, Deke Ryan, Rita Hollingsworth, Jeff Hollingsworth, Bonnie Mark, and Bernadette Sullivan, an acting company member. That's everybody. Oh, and Jeff Hollingsworth is here as well. Independent Shakespeare Company serves our community by creating inspiring, accessible theater and bringing it to as wide an audience as possible. For the past 10 summers, our nonprofit company has produced free performances in LA city parks, first at Barnstall and now in the Old Zoo. We started small. Our very first performance at Barnstall Park was attended by 15 people and a dog, and the dog left at intermission. This past summer, over 43,000 people attended performance in Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. And there is diverse as the city itself, over 40% identify as people of color and 41% make less than $25,000 a year. They come from all over the city, from San Pedro to Silmar, from Marina Del Rey to East Los Angeles as well as points beyond, but they all have one thing in common, they've come to the park for a free performance of a Shakespeare play. Tickets in Los Angeles can go as high as $200 for performances at the Pentagis. $60 is common in larger venues. And if we conservatively say that an average theater ticket in LA is $30, 43,000 people attending the summer festival represents a value of nearly $1.3 million, all entirely free to Los Angeles. We provide other tangible benefits. Almost 40% stop at local businesses on their way and the festival employs over 20 people and with many more community members participate as volunteers. We not only do performances of plays, we have free workshops for families in both Spanish and English. We've opened our stage to other local performing artists through our Festival Arts Partners programs, and these shows range from ballet folklorico to comedy to modern dance. Classical plays are our shared cultural legacy. They can play a vital role in creating positive, hopeful, inspiring experiences, building bonds among our diverse communities. We are so thankful for the partnerships we developed with the Department of Rexon Parks and the Department of Cultural Affairs. And through the years, we've garnered support from the neighborhood councils of Los Feliz, Atwater Village, Silver Lake, Hollywood Studio District, and East Hollywood. District, and East Hollywood. The offices of Council District 4 and Council District 13 have both been instrumental. Councilmember Tom Labonge has been our strongest city champion, and in our early days at Barnstall, Councilmember, now Mayor Eric Garcetti, was especially helpful to us, and without the support from the city, we would not be here today. But equally vital has been the extraordinary grassroots support from our public. It's our great joy to serve an audience that is as broad and vivid as the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Melissa, Charles, I just wanted to thank you directly, all of you. It's so special. Someone said, "The world's a stage," and each of us played a part.
Someone did say that.
Fate had me in love with you as my sweetheart. Act 1 is where we met. You read your line so cleverly and never missed a cue. Then came Act 2. You seemed to change. You acted strange as to why I'll never know. Honey, you lied when you said you loved me. Let's hear it for the William Shakespeare Independent, Independent Shakespeare Company. Give them a big hand. Thank you very much.
You must be entertaining.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Truly, all the world is a stage and we are merely the players. That takes us to Item 1, called Special by Mr. Blumenfield.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a few comments about our appointee, Jessica Levinson. While I don't know her that well, I've actually just met her recently. I know her father, Mark, very well. Mark is all over the valley, is a tireless advocate for business and many good causes. He's currently the President of the United Chambers of Commerce, but I met him when I was an Assembly Member, and we've worked together on so many different things. Today, obviously, is not about Mark, but it's about his wonderful daughter, Jessica. And I'd be remiss to talk about all the wonderful things that she is doing without mentioning her obvious influence from her father. She assisted the AIDS Project Los Angeles, worked on intellectual property issues, authored briefs for the United States Supreme Court on public campaign financing, and she's done, you know, much pro bono work. I can already tell that Jessica will be a true asset for the City Ethics Commission. It takes a person with a strong sense of right and wrong and acute awareness of the integrity of other people to be on that commission. And one of those people, and I strongly lend my support to her nomination, is Jessica Levinson, and I strongly urge her appointment to the City Ethics Committee. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And if any Councilmembers, if we could have Ms. Levinson please join us at the center table.
Good morning. I'll do something my students never do and turn my phone off.
Thank you. It's something none of us either do either. With that, if you wanted to just give us a very brief and quick opening remark, I believe you've already gone through the committee process as well, so we don't have to revisit that, and then we'll see if any Councilmembers have any questions as well.
That would be great. So thank you very much for having me. Thank you for having me up here on the table again. So what I'd like to do briefly during my time is actually to thank my family and friends for coming. My parents, Fay and Mark Levinson, and my friends, Joanna Silverman and Betsy Rosenfeld and Fran Siegel and Tara Crowe, and my husband, Stephen Lonseth. So I'm very excited to start working, to undertake the important work that the Ethics Commission does, and I think that with my background in election law, I will be able to serve an important purpose on the commission, and I really look forward to beginning.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coretts?
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to note that Jessica has an incredible amount of on-point experience, and we're lucky to have her be willing to take this on, particularly her work for the Center for Governmental Studies, which I've been very familiar with over the years, where she researched and wrote reports on a variety of topics, including election laws, campaign finance laws, term limits, primary election systems, redistricting, and all kinds of other on-point stuff. I think you will be a great asset to this commission, and maybe you could just speak to that a little bit, how you think your experience there will dovetail with working on ethics here in Los Angeles.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you, Councilwoman, very much. And so, as the Councilwoman said, my work has been focused on the issues that the Ethics Commission works on: campaign finance, disclosure, issues of civic engagement, and increasing the public trust. And I'm very much looking forward to working on a commission whose purpose, when the voters created the commission, was to create fair and accountable elections through a system of campaign contribution limits, just conflict of interest, lobbying, so I absolutely hope to bring my experience to bear there.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Levinson, welcome and congratulations. I have a unique position in being a Councilmember who previously served on the Ethics Commission.
I know.
And in the time that I've been here, I can't recall someone coming before us as an appointee to the Ethics Commission who is more superbly qualified by professional background to do that work. And so I'm thrilled to see your appointment to this position. One of the issues that has been most important to me is the inability that we seem to have, given the constitutional restrictions that have been identified by the courts, to regulate independent expenditure campaigns. And I've been especially focused, both in my time in the legislature and here, in trying to encourage greater disclosure of contributors to independent expenditure campaigns and provide a greater degree of public awareness as to who is trying to influence our elections because we have this situation in Los Angeles where the campaigns themselves are closely constrained, whereas independent expenditure campaigns basically have become completely unrestrained. And so it creates an imbalance. And given your vast experience, academic experience, and professional experience in this area, I'd like to know if you have some general thoughts about that and some ideas about what directions we might be able to go in to create a little bit greater balance so that there's greater public accountability for those campaigns.
My general thoughts are that you're absolutely right. We live in an era of unrestricted independent expenditures because of decisions that the Supreme Court has made, and so I think it's very important that the public knows who's speaking to them, who's trying to sway their votes. And increasingly, the law is moving towards a place where transparency and disclosure is where the, you know, quote-unquote "action" is. And there's a reason when we have commercials that it says, "This is a paid spokesperson." So I think when we're talking about something as important as who you're going to vote for, or in the case of ballot measures, what you're going to vote on, that it is very important to have smart and balanced disclosure that gives the public the information to which they're entitled while still balancing privacy interests. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That completes the queue. We've had the public hearing in council, so the cards will be attached to the file. There's no public hearing at this. Ms. Levinson, we're going to open the roll now. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Fourth with to the mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we had a great tour upstairs. Thanks to you.
Good job, Tom Bradley Tower.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 8, called special by Councilmember Coretts.
Mr. Coretts? Mr. Paul Coretts?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. After looking this over, I do have a few questions I wanted to ask staff before the full council. Do we have half-staff here to answer questions on this issue?
Jim Marchese with Bureau of Sanitation, Assistant Division Manager, project team leader for the environmental effort.
Good morning. Omar Mugharam, Director of Regulatory Affairs with the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Sanitation.
Yes, a few questions, and I've asked some of them in variations in committee, but I just want to clarify some of it. At the end of the day, once everything is online and back in place, will this project result in a net increase or decrease in air pollution as opposed to current practices?
In relationship to the current practice, it will result in a net decrease in air emissions in the local environment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. It's a little noisy.
A net decrease in the local environment.
So I know one of the project objectives is to prevent flares from operating continuously. After the 2016 expiration of the contract with DWP for Scattergood to accept the digester gas, is that really a prospect? Will AQMD allow continuous flaring of our digester gas?
The facility is permitted to allow continuous flaring of the digester gas. It's our intent with this project to minimize or eliminate those flare days completely.
Now, how much flaring currently occurs? Is it a significant amount? And if we're sending gas to Scattergood, why is it being flared?
There are maintenance requirements happening at Scattergood because of the outdated equipment that they're currently being utilized at that facility, and during those times where they are conducting maintenance on those steam turbines, the digester gas is being flared.
And during periods where Scattergood can't accept the gas, don't we have the capacity to store it rather than flare it?
We don't have the capacity to store the 8 million standard cubic feet per day that's being generated. What we do is we have the alternative to utilize some of the digester gas in the boilers for the facility to generate steam, but the remainder cannot be stored onsite.
And will we have the capacity? Should anything happen to the new power plant we're building, or will you have to flare the gas if it's down for maintenance or for some other reason?
There's some built-in redundancy into the existing project. We will have several turbines online, and we do have auxiliary firing capabilities built into the project design, so it's our intention that we would minimize or eliminate flaring days.
And the EIR comparisons to a no-project alternative aren't really compared to current practices but to putting the gas in a boiler and doing a large amount of flaring. Why doesn't the EIR consider as an alternative the extension of the current practice to put gas to Scattergood beyond 2016?
The repowering will take several years at that facility. We feel that if we have control over the utilization of that renewable fuel at our facility, we will get the environmental benefit from using renewable fuel at that facility, a reduction in the amount of supplemental natural gas required by Scattergood to use our digester gas, and a net increase in efficiency using combined heat and power.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts. You did push for a second time, but we got it all. No other questions before us? I thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Kocorian. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that I understand, with the combined heat and power project onsite, is it your expectation that that will utilize all of the biogas produced onsite?
100% of the digester gas produced onsite.
This is a terrific project, and will you also realize renewable energy credits as a result of that?
We are currently seeking those with the state as we speak.
And have you had an estimate of what the value of those might be for ratepayers?
We don't have a full understanding of that yet. It's a market-based system, and until we actually are in receipt of those, we won't know.
Okay.
Based on the current rate of the renewable credits, just the renewable credits alone is $3 to $5 million a year savings.
It's a great project. Congratulations.
As well said, Mr. Kocorian, and I thank the Bureau of Sanitation every time I use your facilities, especially on Thursday, which is Collection Day, but every day, hyperinturo treatment plant makes a difference, more difference coming. Thank you so much. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on that matter, fourth with. Next item is going to be Item Number 10. We got a card from Mr. Walsh.
Always a pleasure to speak in front of my former Councilman, Mr. Labonge. I didn't move, the Council District moved. Number 10, this concerns smart policing project, LAPD to reduce gun violence in the Newton area. Yes, the gun violence in the Newton area is terrible, and we ask that you support this, and it is always a pleasure to speak in front of you as acting president because you don't bully the people at the microphone.
He is not talking about this item.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Labonge can decide whether I'm out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Item 13, got pleasure for cards?
How about 11?
11 was continued.
11 was continued. Mr. Sax, we note your card on 11, okay? They note your card. Now we're going to 13. Mr. Herman, you're after Mr. Walsh on Item 13, please.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and then click to J. Walsh Confidential. This concerns, this is an item seconded by Mr. Weezer. Oh, he's not, he's not here. I wonder why. Item 13 concerns $8,000 for community services. We're 100% in favor of this, but we are just at a loss why Mr. Weezer is at this meeting.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
I would like to say that it is the chair that will decide when I am out of order. HollywoodHighlands.org. It's a pleasure to speak in front of you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And then thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Herman?
Will the city address the multitude of problems associated in these fundings for the cultural art city events? There's a line of items here that need approval by the council when it comes to multiple problems of transfers. When will the city become accountable in the way it's spending? I see here Ms. Martinez and Mr. Weezer related to the funding for further support of community service in Council District 6. Well, Mr. Weezer's not even here to address this topic, and it's a shame when your representative, whose item it is, to speak on behalf of all of you residents, you, the City of Los Angeles, is not here. Councilman Weezer.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
Well, Mr. Herman, hold your time for a second. Talk about the issue. It doesn't matter who seconds it, who thirds it, or fourths it, or firsts it. It's your time to express your thoughts on this issue. Please, thank you.
Am I under the Brown Act, or am I under my First Amendment right to speak? Which one?
Speak to the issue. The issue is, what's the subject on the agenda item?
The subject, the subject of matter is on the contents of this paper here, and I'm using the names on this paper. So am I out of context of what's here, or am I being debated against what I'm supposed to speak about under my own condition of mind? Hold my time.
Not going to hold your time. Make your comment.
Then I'm right then. When I speak against Councilman Weezer, who's not here representing the City of Los Angeles...
Speak to the chair. That's all right. He's excused. Thank you, Mr. Herman. That completes the card. Public comment, no speakers. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item Number 14, Mr. Arnold Sax.
Good morning.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's just relatively murky with this item. It mentions amending prior council action regarding a transfer of funds. Doesn't mention what the transfer funds occurred, where it came from, but it goes on to mention that the balance of the original transfer amount, $4,000, little over $4,000, doesn't mention what the original transfer amount was from the mayor's fund. So this money came from the mayor's fund to fund the security costs, the 2012 summer pool season, $15,000, $4,000. We're looking for an amount of this transfer, and how a balance ends up in AB 1290 funding account. Why would it go to AB 1290 funding accounting when AB 1290 funding accounting is money that comes back from the state? Why wouldn't it maintain its, its location within the mayor's fund? Why isn't it being returned there? And again, it's the sources of revenue that the councilmen in their council offices have to bequeath to the public, and where they come from, and how they're generated, and how these sources come to be accumulated, AB 1290 funding. Where does the mayor's fund come from? Well, it comes from the general fund. Is it collected from taxes? Is it collected from transit-oriented taxes? Is it occupancy tax? Is it bus bench revenue? Is it billboard revenue? Is it any of the numerous sources of revenue that fall into the city? Well, we don't know, because we have a transfer of funds for security services and a general...
I'll let you know, it opened the pools that the councilman got done for people, and if you swam in a public pool, you'd be welcome to come. That's what it did. And 1290 came from CRA money, and if you want more, I'll see you after council to educate you. Thank you, Arnold. No speakers on the queue. We help people here in the city hall. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item number 15, John Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you're closer to the mic, please proceed first. Mr. Herman, sit there and wait for Mr. Walsh. You lost your turn, is it going to let you go ahead? Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I thought I handed a card for 14, but anyway, you're doing a great job with the pools. I've been here since 1976. Anyone who thinks that there's hanky panky going on at the minority pools, nonsense. Any white person who thinks it's nonsense.
He is not talking about this item.
He's going to address it now. Come on, Mr. Walsh, you got it.
You make the decision, not him.
Mr. President, I am advising you that he's not talking about this item.
I appreciate that, Mr. City Attorney.
Records show that when I praise Tom Labange, I'm told I'm off-subject by the city attorney. Okay, number 15, this concerns restricting of parking vehicles that are six feet or more in length on identified city streets. This is a very good motion. This protects Buscaino's district, and it protects, and Bannon will also put this up. Remember, everything they do is not wrong. If you get up here and say everything they do is wrong, then you're not from some other city. Oh, you're all a bunch of crooks! I'm 65, I'm, oh, I'm, fuck, fuck! Notice when I, now when I praise you all, I'm not called off the top.
He actually is not talking about this item.
You're pathetic. Well, you're doing a wonderful job, both sides of Beacon Street. Beacon Street is an important street, some people have never even been. People have lived in this city for 30, 40 years, they've never been San Pedro. It's true, I've only been there about five or six times. It's like another city. It's beautiful, and you're keeping it beautiful, and I support Mr. Buscaino in this issue. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman, your turn, please.
Time started before I even got here, amazing. Relative to restricting the parking of vehicles, including but not limited to vehicles that are six feet or more in height, identified on streets during certain hours. What about these vehicles that are parked in handicap areas that are not painted? What about the people with disabilities, the elderly, who are struggling to maneuver their car where there it's not an inch, a yard? Come on, Dion, you're speaking, have a seat so I can continue.
Address the council only.
Going forward, it states we should prohibit the Los Angeles Municipal Code. Now we're going by codes and section, which should always have been applied and determined by this city from the time that codes and violations were enacted in the city. But going on, Section 80.69.4, the parking of vehicles that are exceeding the 22-feet length of over eight, 64 inches in height during the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So for those of you in this area of Mr. Buscaino and Bannon, all I say is park the right way. That way you don't have to get a ticket, and the city will find a way to incur more money that they're losing. Thank you.
Okay, so no speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Good. And item number 17, Madam Clerk, that is asked to be continued to Tuesday by Mr. Coretts. Is that correct, Mr. Coretts? Note and file these cards, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Sacks.
And for the record, Mr. President, for item 17, that's continued to October 22nd.
October 22nd. Item number nine, by cards, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Walsh.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And this is, again, the REAP program. And I know I've done this before, but this resolution was presented by Paul Kocorian and seconded by Herb Wesson, but it really wasn't dated. And it mentions that under the REAP program, the SEEP, the Systematic Code Enforcement Program, 720,000 multifamily rental properties are routinely inspected throughout the city. And since 1998, the slum properties have fallen from 150,000 to less than 1,000 today. So I bring that up to you because if that's the good news, then why not take the resources that are used for the REAP program, for the blighted property program, for the foreclosure registry program that you pronounced in your housing special meeting on Wednesday, July 24, 2013, to implement a $274 foreclosure registry inspection fee, and to enforce the ordinance that you created where houses in disrepair that are in foreclosure would be fined $1,000 if they were bank-owned, $1,000 a day. Now, people that live in the city will come up here and say, well, we have problems with the finoculare car in downtown LA, it's in disrepair. But if the city was collecting foreclosed property money at $1,000 a day...
He is not talking about the REAP program.
All right.
And I'm talking about how people will make mention about how people who don't live in the city don't know what the problems are within the city.
That's okay, this is the city of Los Angeles, not Lenox. Hold his time.
That this funds could be used to repair those minutia that some people think are so important.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman?
Item 1, correct? Subject on liens. Again, if any one of you have this agenda, all-American is it, to have a lien placed on you that goes to the county recorders as an infraction?
This is not a lien issue.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Please address the issue, Mr. Herman.
Resolution relative to removing various properties from rent escrow account program. It is similar to what a lien will lead you to under a rent escrow account program, because you will eventually, if you don't know this, Los Angeles, you will have to pay for your REAP to get yourself out of what the city has put you into, a problem, a problem. The city continues, a problem, all-American.
All right, that completes the card. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Madam Clerk, we have number 16 available?
Yes, item 16, and amended motion 16A has been circulated. 16 called special by Councilman Coretts.
Coretts. Mr. Coretts, before you have one public comment card, Mr. Walsh, care to comment on this? Pass, no public comments. Let's have the speaker from Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I rise to ask for your support on an important issue to Council District 5, where there are many single-family neighborhoods that are being negatively impacted. While the baseline mansionization ordinance was a good start and sufficient for many neighborhoods, it hasn't stopped the tide of oversized spec homes being built by developers in small, character-rich neighborhoods. These out-of-scale homes are two to three times larger than the existing homes, loom over their neighbors, robbing them of sunlight, air, and privacy, and completely changing the character of these neighborhoods. The proposed Beverly Grove RFA seeks to stem the tide of these McMansions while still allowing property owners to grow their homes and their families. We believe we struck the needed balance, and therefore I ask for your support for this very important item to residents of the 5th district. Thank you very much.
Very well. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
So ordered.
And that's adopted as amended.
As amended, thank you. Mr. Coretts, you may want to visit with your constituents, they seem very happy back there, that's good to see. Give Mr. Coretts another hand right there. Good job. All right, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
That takes counsel to general public comment.
Mr. Walsh, general public comment.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Mr. Weezer is not here. Mr. Weezer yesterday confessed to having sex with his deputy. In August, he said to the media that he wasn't having sex with his deputy. Now, he compounds the lie by saying, "I had sex with her, but she enjoyed it." Now, let me tell you, we were the first to ask you, to ask Mr. Weezer to step down. The mayor of San Diego confessed to having, being guilty of sexual harassment, he stepped down. We may never see him again, but let's look at what his misgodoy put in her lawsuit. And this is there, go to HollywoodHighlands.org and you will see it. She said she got a phone call from Weezer, and he said he would meet her in the street in his car near her apartment. When she went down, she found Mr. Weezer in his car. Mr. Weezer then said, "If you give me sex now, I will endorse you for the Los Angeles Community College Board." Mr. Weezer then unzipped his pants and pulled out his penis and asked for fellatio. Now, fellatio, in case some people don't know, means oral sex or a blowjob. That is where we are with this council. She was shocked, and she ran back to her apartment, and since, and that was when he started pushing her out, cutting everything. You know what? I'm not interested in sucking off Weezer, but if anybody in the city council wants to, keep your mouth shut.
All right, so this is a public comment, First Amendment protects speech. Arnold Sacks. Come on, Arnold.
You caught me off-guard, you usually call two names at a time.
Okay, I apologize.
Anyway, thank you, Arnold Sacks. And since the item was continued to Tuesday, and since Mr. Kocorian made mention about three months ago about how an item that's no longer on the agenda can be discussed in public comment, my concerns, A and B, was something at the airport and this, this new transportation system with these online taxicab companies. There was a story in the Daily Breeze Monday, October 14th, and I'm quoting from this. It mentions that Mr. Roush, William Roush, the general manager of Yellow Cab of Los Angeles, mentions that UberX, Lyft, and Sidecar drivers to compete with taxicab drivers who must collect an extra $4 fee for all passengers leaving the airport. About half of the fee, Roush said, facilitates the airport's taxi program, while the other half goes towards the airport's operating budget. Why is the public paying $2 to facilitate a taxicab program? Well, how is that possible? Why is the public paying for a private business to operate? That's what you pay a taxi fare for. Why are they getting $2 per cab ride from the public that should be going to the airport? The airport raised the fee to accommodate the new building, and now we find out it's going to the taxicab companies, which are private businesses. You can get maybe transportation light rail to the airport, according to the last stories in the LA Times, maybe. And these jackasses are getting $2 per fare. 1,000 fares a day, $2,000 a day, $14,000 a week, go into private industry.
Bobby Cooper, please, Bobby Cooper.
Good evening. Good afternoon, gentlemen. You know my name. Listen, I'm here today because I'm in and out of these, I've learned about these institutions that you have, and you're still hollering about Medicare problems that you're having with the Medicare and all that. You're going to have problems if you don't start looking into these nursing homes, you know. My life is being threatened at present. You know, I've got documents here. This is my brother here. You know, this coroner's report on him, forged with my mother's name, saying he was nobody. Same thing they did to that boy in Florida, stuffed his body with newspaper. This was an organ donor thing, you know, illegal. Now they're trying to do the same doggone thing to me. This is admission, report to a medical center or a nursing home. I'm supposed to be in there. Do I look like I belong in a nursing home? Do I? I've been in five, seven nursing homes on Medicare, you understand, to complete Medicare fraud. Now they're trying to murder me for this money right here. The names of these gentlemen, well, I wouldn't even give that, I don't even have enough time. But this is $250,000 put in the bank for my people, you understand, for the poor people of Los Angeles City. I've been fighting for this money for three years now, coming before city council, fighting your law enforcement, individual police officers, taking over my, my bank account, my business, and has my wife somewhere in the city hiding, you know. I would appreciate it that if you would contact the federal government, the FBI, you know, because this is a federal situation, and I need help to save my, well, I'm not even worried about my life, because they got the problem, they're the ones that's worried. You have them stay out of my business, get out of my business, I'm legally in that business.
It does not appear to be within the jurisdiction of the city.
Mr. Cooper, it does not appear to be within jurisdiction of the city. Thank you for your comment, but I'll talk to you after the ropes, after the meeting. Brian Barajas? Brian Barajas, Brian?
Well, I think I should say that, I don't know if everybody heard the news, but the governor of Texas has called the impeachment of Barack Obama for the murder, and what I've been stating all along. This son of a bitch is about to be impeached. And any American, any patriot, will be fighting for this country, for the restoration of Glass-Steagall, for the restoration of John F. Kennedy's Noapa program, thermonuclear fusion, and shutting down the green environmentalists. There are murderers, and this president and anybody who supports him are about to be put somewhere very, very pleasant. So now, I think we need to talk seriously amongst ourselves if we are...
Hold his time. Hold his time, please. Our sound man, make sure the equipment is not hurt by this. Please lower your voice and articulate. Continue.
Thank you very much. But this is my point. You're, the baby boomers or the individuals who did not fight for the American Constitution after the assassination of John F. Kennedy, these cowards will not be serving in public or call themselves citizens of the United States any longer.
Stop your time, sir. Stop your time, Mr. City Attorney. I do not like the threatening tone of the speaker.
I don't believe he's talking regarding something that's in the jurisdiction of the city.
Thank you very much. Please relate it to the city of Los Angeles, and please do not make threatening comments about any public official or anybody.
I didn't name any public official. So I think I got people's attention, and I think that's a good thing. So that means that we need to be very vigilant amongst ourselves, don't we? This president is committing genocide, and if that's not in this jurisdiction, what universe is this then? I mean, is people committing treason? Think about it.
Richard Robinson, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. President, members, in 1971, when I was sent by the University of Michigan to Los Angeles, Mr. Bradley was at this horseshoe. I moved into Los Angeles with, with Motown. I'm a Robinson. Subsequently, I met Mrs. Carrie Grant. We, we were, we remodeled, we tore down the AMC 14 theaters over in Century City. We built AMC 15. I had problems with my family. One of my sisters was really having difficulty, so I took them over to, members of my family to Inglewood. Mr. President, I had the distinct pleasure of babysitting Tina Turner for a while. That was 42 years ago. Today, I'd like to announce what has been existent for about 42 years, Black Hole Productions. I helped Nicolas Cage do his Windtalkers, which he mistitled and called Windtalkers instead of Code, but that's neither here nor there. We know what Tom Hanks did later, Da Vinci Code. But I'd like to go on record today as establishing a trademark, which was pre-registered by my former mayor in Ann Arbor, Black Hole Productions. Thank you very much.
Daniel Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. I'd like to congratulate the city council member on getting a driver's license bill passed by the governor. That was, that was very good. I think it's gonna be much more safer on our streets in the state of California. Tuesday, I went to a Occupy Venice meeting. It was about water crisis, and it's about many different issues. Tomorrow, Saturday, at Culver City, the Veterans Park, they're gonna have a tour of the oil fields. Please go to globalfrackdown.org to get the time and place specific. The speakers were Brendan Noren from Food and Water Watch, Liz Crossen from LA Waterkeepers, and Connor Everett from SoCal Watershed Alliance. The Food and Water Watch mission statement works to ensure food, water, fish we consume is safe, accessible, and sustainably produced, so we can all enjoy and trust what we eat, drink. We help people take charge of where their food comes from, keep it clean, affordable, public tap water flowing freely to our homes, protect the environment, quality of the oceans, force government to do its job protecting citizens, educate about the importance of keeping global commons, our, keeping global commons, our shared resources under public Forty-five percent of the gas wells in the city or the county of Los Angeles are leaking. That is not for the general common good. Across this country, we're destroying our watersheds, and global interests are gonna tighten down the water. I thought the movie Soylent Green scared the hell out of me. Global fracking, and in this country, is destroying our watersheds, and they're gonna produce a, well, it's just not good. Please go to globalfracking.org, please. Thank you very much.
Is it Aaron or Eric? Previn? Is it Aaron or Eric?
Eric.
Please, state it for the record. Thank you.
It's Eric Previn, the county resident from District Three. City Council, today at item one, you approved Jessica Levinson to be the, the new Ethics Commissioner, and there was no public comment on that particular item because it was provided at a committee earlier, but I asked Herb Wesson and his son, Justin, if I could speak on it, because I'm supportive of her appointment, but also I had an idea, which I mentioned in committee, about the county and the city pooling some resources in order to do a better job of fighting ethics violations in our community. We have substantial problems at LA County. The assessor, recently out of jail, John Nogez. We have, in addition to that, obviously, Judge Lavin made a blistering finding against the Coliseum Commission, which members of this August board sit on, along with the sitting supervisors. They've recently changed that commission to make it fewer eyeballs watching what's going on, and the deal with USC was completely without appropriate public scrutiny, according to Judge Lavin. There's a lot of issues with the lobbyist activity, both here in City Hall and over at County Hall, and yet there are two different standards for what's appropriate and what's not, and yet many of the players and active participants in that conduct are the same. So yesterday, I mentioned it at the Ethics Commission, Mr. Wesson was at jury duty allegedly, and, you know, I just, I can only say this about this team. This team is not doing what they say. They're saying civic engagement is good, open government is positive, let's bring it forward. How about a commission, another commission? And yet, in practice, Herb Wesson is standing right there. I told him right through his son, so they know each other, "Hey, I'd like to address this giant, you know, allegedly respectable body about an important issue, which is, let's shake the county loose with some of the 300, I think it's 38 million, I misspoke earlier, in additional revenue lying around, spend a million or a few million of that dollars hiring the city Ethics Commission, like they hire our public health group, to provide meaningful ethics reform and frankly, guidelines that are meaningful. Why should lobbyists in City Hall have a ban on giving gifts? And over at County Hall, you can give a gift up to 50... It's ridiculous.
All right, thank you very much. If you want to meet me after the meeting, I'll explain why the city-county has a separation. Thank you so much. This is a last-minute card, after the meeting, sir. After the meeting, sir. Mr. Schwartz, you're from out of town. Please hurry. You got your card in, in just in the last moment.
Thank you for taking my card.
Out of town, too, Lennox.
Thank you for taking my card. My question is for Mr. Kukorian, and that question is, when will you be decided on which route the Purple Line extension should take? Thank you.
You can come anytime when you're that fast. Last card, Mr. Constituent. Mr. Herman.
Oil Heights, how American it is to be a narcissistic councilman. How deeply wrong were you? Do you regret it, Mr. Weezer? Experience later in life, people are less happy and suffer poor health like you, Mr. Weezer, as I have such problems and such headaches and such backaches, and more like to drink? You should be ashamed of all those permits you gave out for drinking. Same way if all these restaurants, Mr. Weezer. The bottom line is, money cannot buy family unity. Your prestigious stance for what you did was great at one time, and now you fumbled. The past is out of play. And as I brought back out three months ago, Mr. Weezer, step down. Go away, go away, go away, because this is America, and I believe in America still, Mr. Weezer, and you should go away. Striving for finance and success, Mr. Weezer, makes people miserable. Had you stuck to your simple idea as a politician and represented those in your community, you would have done good. And Ms. Godoy, do a man. In a sense, but not personally, as they said with these terms of population or copulation. The fact is this, obsession, possession distracts us from the way things that are important and the things that matter more. You cannot buy love, Mr. Weezer, and now step down. It is time. Wiener, Philner, go away. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. That's why I wore half a short, because you did half of your business for this city.
That completes public comment at this time. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? Announcements? We already spoke of the great Trojans back at Notre Dame, as well as the Bruins are up at Stanford, and the big Dodger game tonight, and hopefully tomorrow. Also, just for everyone to know, too, tomorrow is Runyon Canyon Restoration Day, and a great organization called Gate for Good will be there. Every year, they come out to do great restoration work in this very natural-loving park of Runyon Canyon. Sunday's Depot Day, out at, out at Travel Town in Griffith Park. Everyone's welcome to come. And also, another great activity, Mr. Robinson, if you go out to the Valley, Sherman Oaks has their Great Street Fair, a highlight on our Sister City programs. Any other announcements, members? Any adjourning motions, members? Adjourning motions? We have an adjourning motion. Members, I'd like you to join in memory of adjourning in Joyce Black. Joyce Black, married to Stanley Black for over 57 years. She passed recently of a battle with cancer at 75. She was born in Los Angeles, went to local schools, including John Burrows, and also Fairfax and UCLA. She was very involved with her husband's life as their family, and daughters, and son, and was involved with many, many, many civic organizations. We all know Stanley Black, but his loving wife, Joyce, is in heaven. We ask that we adjourn in her memory. Any other adjourning motions? Let's go serve the city well, enjoy and love Los Angeles, and every day's a blessing. This meeting is adjourned.